There's Max. Hi. You're up. Because you're looking so nice in your suit. Yes.
If I could, I'll call up our new councillors one by one and have them present in front here for this. And then we'll get you going. So the first one I have here is Mr. Gelfand. Will you come up and... Welcome. So I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dennis Gelfand.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will to the best of my ability.
That I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I would support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon. And the ordinances of the City of King City.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
Congratulations, councillor Gelfand.
Thank you.
Mr. Ocholi. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Master Ocholi.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will to the best of my ability.
That I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wallen, send. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Gary Wallison.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will to the best of my ability.
That I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
Congratulations, councillor. Mr. Olston. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Randall Olston.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will to the best of my ability.
That I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
The duties of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
And the ordinances of King City.
Congratulations, councillor.
Thank you, Mike. Congratulations and welcome to all the new councillors. Apologize that I skated in right at 6:00. Meant to get here a little earlier and shake hands with all of you before the meeting started. My apologies. Now, does anybody have a charger I can borrow, please? Thank you. May I do the roll call without Mike being present, Ronnie?
Aye.
Do you like to do the roll call for us?
Councillor Ocholi?
Yes.
Councillor Tancum?
Here.
Councillor Manella?
Here.
Councillor Gelfand?
Olston? Here. I think I put a name in there, I'm sorry. Uh, councillor Olston?
Here.
Councillor Thompson?
Present. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for coming. I didn't already say that. We will move on to approval of the minutes. First up is our October 18, 2023 city council meeting minutes. The new councillors obviously weren't here for that meeting, so you can vote, but you can abstain.
They read the minutes and they were here, they can vote.
Okay. That's nice to me. It should be more current. Ronnie was here. Yep. So has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from October 18? Okay. Does anyone have any questions about minutes, of those of us that did review them?
Yes, mayor, why are the minutes still there?
That would be a question for our... He was wondering why the minutes are in so late from October, and now we're in June. Okay. Any other questions?
Does the city have a policy on how many minutes need to be updated?
Um...
Thank you.
Perhaps you could just look into that at some point and get back to us by the next meeting, that would be appreciated. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? Any corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 18, 2023. And do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Anyone that's abstaining from voting? Thank you. We'll move on to April 17, 2024, regular city council minutes. Did everybody have a chance to review minutes? Are there any questions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 17, 2024 minutes. All those in favor of approving the April 17, 2024 minutes, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstaining?
Good order.
Yes.
The way it works is you either vote yes, or you abstain, you can't do both.
Right, and he also approves.
Your motion is approved.
Neither motion, neither motion is affirmative.
The motion to approve is approving.
No, I'll move it for discussion.
I'm applying either way. Make the motion, they'll lather up the vote and then correct it. Just not ready, no, I'm applying.
Okay. Thanks, Ronnie, I mean, that's good to question and clarify all about that. All right, let's move on to, are we ready to move on? Okay. April 23, 2024 work session, city council minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review these minutes? And are there any questions, comments, concerns, changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 23, 2024 work session, city council minutes.
Forgot that one.
Can you hear Jan seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving, raise your hand, please. All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you. And the last one is May 9, 2024 work session, city council minutes. Are there any questions, comments, concerns, changes? All those in favor of approving the May 9, 202... Oh. No, I have a motion approved.
Make a motion to approve the May 9, 2024 work session minutes.
All those in favor of approving the April, or sorry, May 9, 2024 minutes, raise your hand, please. If unanimous? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm way down here on the end. When I vote, do I need to make eye contact with Ronnie, is he counting the votes?
I think Mr. Weston is. Yeah, thanks for asking, great question. And feel free to, you know, for the newer councillors, feel free to ask questions at any time, because I understand it's all new and overwhelming and confusing at times. So I remember being in that seat and feeling the same way. So no question is a dumb question. Okay, moving on to open forums. Public comment and testimony may be presented during the Zoom... Oh, are we, do we have anyone on Zoom that wants to make a comment? Okay. Oh, got it. Okay. So if you're online and you'd like to make a public comment, can please raise your hand so that Ronnie can be aware that you're waiting to make comment. And we'll probably go to people online first, I think is what we generally do. And then after we've gone through the people online, we'll move to the people that are present in person. Anyone? Sorry? Don Mobley? Okay. Trying to make sure my microphone's working.
Can you guys hear me?
Can you please state your name? Yeah, can you hear me, Don?
Yes. Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you. Can you please state your full name, your address?
My name is...
And your address?
Sure, thank you. Okay, so Don Mobley, my address is 17030 Southwest 137. Well, I still call it Tigerd, Oregon 97224. So to begin, this comment is in regards to the resolution that you guys will be looking at here soon for R 2024-10, supporting a transportation growth management program grant. Council is being asked to support the funding to be applied to the Westside Trail Planning, Design and Engineering. This resolution under item four gives the city manager authority to take all necessary actions to prepare and submit the grant application. I respectfully ask that the council modify this resolution to remove the authority of the city manager to submit the grant prior to council reviewing the application. This will allow council to review what the TMG objectives will cover, what the timeframe will be for the implementation and urgency, what policy decisions that will be needed, and what the tasks and deliverables are expected, and how the project will tie into housing. These are all outlined in the grant application, and it is reasonable to ask that the council review these items before granting resolution approval. Secondly, I respectfully ask that the grant application be published with time allowed for public comment input and reviewed in a public forum before council approval and submission. This will increase transparency and help engage the community consistent with the goals of item five. Item five notes that the city council will ensure that the Westside Trail Park will reflect the needs and values of the King City residents. I believe that the recent recall is, it is clear to the council that the community wants a modification to the TSP in regards to the Fisher Road extension. This grant, if awarded, can be used towards modifying the TSP before funding, before funds are used to engineer the plan for the Westside Trail that the city manager has stated will include road crossings planned in the TSP. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Don. I thought that was really well spoken, the way she said that. And I think that's something that we'll talk about when we get to new business. It's item number seven E. That's something that we can speak with the staff about. So I appreciate it, Don, thank you very much. Is there anyone else online, Ronnie? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment?
Hello, all, and welcome.
Please state your full name and address, please.
Dean Blair, 13960 Southwest River Lane, Incorporated, Washington County. Just a quick reminder, at the last meeting, I was, I asked if we could put on the agenda for this meeting to look at the development code for notification purposes for large developments. And simply, I understand it's a busy, it's a busy time right now, it's a, it's a time of change right now. So anyhow, I would just like to repeat that for next month, that that gets on. And if you weren't here on the last time, the concept is that for the major town hall developments, they were, they needed to have a neighborhood meeting. They did everything the development code asks, requires to do for notification. But I'm gonna do the thing a lawyer never does, ask a question I don't know the answer to. So of all the people here, how many knew about that meeting before it happened? And these are your most involved citizens. I guessed right. Anyhow, hope we can have it on the agenda next, next meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe we did have some discussion around that, and I think that was something that Max was further exploring, if I'm not mistaken.
The notice standards are usually set by the statute.
Right.
So they're uniform throughout the system.
Right, but I think we were talking about looking at putting it on the developer.
So we met with those same developers earlier this week, and they are holding another, they're planning on doing another neighborhood meeting. Or it's not held by the city.
Right.
The city doesn't, I mean, we can't afford to be spending that, that's not held by the city. But I did tell them that if they give me all the information, I can put it on the website calendar. So if you check the website calendar, you will see that. That's like the resource that we have to indicate events that are within the community but not held by the city. So that was one step towards that, hopefully.
Yeah. I think that's helpful, and I mean, understanding that it's a large expense to make these notifications. So I think at least posting it on our calendar is the least we can do to open the lines of communication with our community members. Thank you.
Is the clarification, the statute in this instance, that's a minimum, isn't it? That the city can't exceed it?
So this doesn't sound like it's a city public hearing, it sounds like it's a developer's, I'm getting more of that. Yeah, so that's not something that the city would normally send out a notification on, that's something that we would probably email to our list of people that have asked to be notified of things. It might, you know, I don't know. Sometimes the developers put up signs, I don't know if that, I don't know what happens in this case. There are parameters that are set for them to put up signs and notify people. For example, in cities that are developed, if they're in a city that's small, 150 feet, will cover a lot of area, but it gets the word out from the developer. In this instance, obviously, the development was outside of the old King City, and where everyone were not allowed people. So it was just more of a geography problem, but as developers, in their growth and regulatory city, some people will be notified just to get that from others.
That makes sense. Thank you. Um... That's not, that's not really how public forum goes, I'm sorry. Anyway, Mike, were you wanting to make a comment?
Meyer 16950, Southwest Meyer Lane, Tigerd. So I couldn't say it more eloquently than Don did. I think that the resolution should have a little bit more involvement. And regarding what Dean had to say, regarding public input when it comes to, you know, the developer, you know, we were informed. And I kind of feel like people wanted to have a little bit of input on the community design when it comes to the town center. And I kind of feel like people felt like maybe they were not part of that process. So at the CPO meeting the other night, the new home company was there, and she did a great job kind of explaining, you know, what the town center's all about, and the amenities that will be included. And we did make the point to her that when some, when they put out a notification to 250 feet to the landowners and nobody shows up, then that's a problem, right? So, you know, we encouraged her that in the future, if they are going to hold a, you know, community involvement meeting, that they reach out to the city and maybe try to include additional people rather than the landowners within 250 feet, which doesn't include too many when you have farms with 50, 60, 100 acres. There aren't going to be too many people that are notified. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else? Yeah, please.
14120, Southwest River Lane, State of Oregon. This is also in regards to notifications. I sent you an email a month or so ago regarding electronic reader boards. I don't know, you never responded, I don't know if you got it or not.
I'm so sorry.
What prompted it? My wife and I were traveling through Dundee, and on the fire station reader board, they were advertising the upcoming city council meeting and the planning commission meetings. I think in the email I sent you, you can purchase an electronic reader board for under $500. I think that would be a good means of communicating these upcoming meetings. Or if you can't afford one yourself, perhaps talk with Deer Creek Elementary and have them put notifications on their electronic reader board. Thank you.
A great recommendation, thank you so much. I'm sorry I didn't get that email. Yeah, I definitely would have responded to that.
And like at the corner of Deer Creek.
Yeah, is that something that city staff can look into for us?
Yes, so Dundee City Council, to be used for health and... You can get, on highway 99, it's a city hall, yeah.
Yeah.
There are ways around the...
Great. I think it's a great idea. Yeah, thanks, Dan. Anyone else have any comments for public farms? Okay, we will move on to unfinished business. Public hearing regarding the advanced finance reimbursement for Ponderosa Pine subdivision. I think I have a script for this. Ronnie, can I confer with you on the script? Is this a script from you or is it from like? From the last one that you gave me for the last hearing that we did on this. This part was scratched out about the attorney general, and it was changed to who would appeal for it? Attorney general?
So it's unclear whether this, this is land use, but it's unclear whether this would go to look or whether it would go to Washington County Circuit Court. Because although it relates to land, it is not strictly a use matter. So that's why I, I do not know, that's for, and lawyers that want him to appeal would have to, have to figure that out. But yeah, that's why I suggested that we...
Okay. Yes, for the clarification. So for the newer councillors, you may or may not be as informed on this line item. And that's understandable and okay, because it's been going on at least in front of us for several months. So if you just want to listen in, and feel free to abstain from voting.
Mayor, I prepared a PowerPoint to kind of give you guys some background information on what's happening.
Cool. Do you want to start off with that, then?
Yeah.
You want me to start with the script?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. I went off script. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we have a scheduled continuation of a quasi judicial land use hearing related to land use file 2023-11, advanced finance reimbursement for Ponderosa Pine subdivision. The hearing format for this proceeding is different than legislative land use proceedings, so members of the public provide testimony in the same manner. Members of the public may participate in person, in writing, or both. We ask that a copy of all written materials be submitted to our city clerk so they can be made part of the record of the proceeding. Failure to raise an issue in person or by letter to the city council precludes the raising of that issue at subsequent time on appeal. Any party with standing may appeal the decision of the city council to the attorney general or district attorney according to the rules adopted by that board. Following a staff report, we will be taking public testimony. Should I keep going? Our in-person testimonials located in the back of the council room is the hearing slash comment. I'm assuming it should say forum after that. Please write your name and all other required fields. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name, address, and whether you're in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comment section. Names will be assigned a number in the order received in the chat box. Please be advised that all participants in person or via Zoom are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and professionally. Interruptions of public meetings containing inappropriate comments, hate speech, sexually explicit content, foul language, or any language suggesting bodily harm to others will not be tolerated. If any participant engages in such conduct, the chair reserves the right to immediately mute and remove the offending individual from the meeting. This action aligns with our commitment to maintaining a safe and respectful environment for all participants. By joining this meeting, you acknowledge and agree to adhere to these guidelines. When I call your name, please give your hearing slash comment registration form to the city recorder. Identify yourself by stating your name and address. The maximum time allotted for public testimony shall be three minutes for an individual, five minutes for applicants, and persons representing four or more persons, and five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. I call the order, the public hearing regarding case number, land use file 2023-11, advanced finance reimbursement for Ponderosa Pine subdivision at 6:31 PM. Do any members of the city council wish to report any significant ex parte contact? If so, are there any members of the audience who would like to comment or challenge that report? Nobody reported, so. Number three, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the city council to hear this matter? Anyone online want to challenge jurisdiction? Number four, does any member of the city council want to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest?
I'm just a licensed real estate broker in state of Oregon, but I have no clients or no, uh, business dealings with this applicant.
Thank you. I'm also a licensed real estate agent in state of Oregon. I don't have any interest in the property or any clients that are interested in those properties. Anyone else? Is any member of the audience which should challenge any individual member of the city council? Anyone online? Want to challenge any individual member of the city council? All those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter today or to the city council, you may be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent time on appeal to the attorney general, district attorney, or Washington County courts. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria in the staff report plan or land use code, which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staffs have identified also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. At this time, I call for the staff to present the proposal along with applicable approval standards and make a recommendation.
I have a quick question though. I think didn't, there's been a couple of months, refresh my memory. Did we close the public?
No, we continued it by.
Okay.
Because in May or in April, we didn't have a full, like there was a lot going on. In May, we needed more information and we wanted to get a new council. Old council.
I couldn't remember.
The first hearing on the first session.
Yeah.
And do you want to specify that all parties did speak on this or we did have a full public hearing section?
Correct.
Opponent and, um, or opponent.
So are you insinuating that we will not have that portion take place tonight?
No, I'm insinuating that we should, but maybe not have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll limit it to the time that I specify. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes for applicants and persons representing four or more persons and five minutes for applicant rebuttal. So we'll stick to that timeline. We're ready for you.
So this is the advanced finance reimbursement district for Ponderosa Pine. So what exactly is advanced finance? But something that was in the city code that was amended back in, uh, October, I believe, last year to adopt this new advanced finance reimbursement anticipation for future developments. So it's basically a method for recapturing costs by developer if they build public infrastructure that could then be used by future development. So if I build, uh, streets that dead end that owns property and they build development at the end of that dead end, they have to pay their fair share for the street that I paid for to build. So it's really just kind of like a tax of your bank about you build something that someone else is going to use. At the full decent cost. Um, one important thing to note is that with an AFR, it is only paid when development happens. So there's no impetus to pay AFR if you've never developed 20 years after it's established. So someone builds a roundabout by my house, I wait 20 years, I sell my property, developer comes in, they build something, they don't have to pay an AFR. It just didn't longer than 20 years. So to kind of dive into how it works a little bit more, um, like I just said, developer builds public infrastructure improvements that have substantially used by adjacent property owners for their own development. Developer provides proven expense reports, so they show all their invoices. They have statements from their contractors. They prove this is what we have paid, this money went towards within the public improvement. The city engineer then looks over their expense reports and just determines what exactly it is that is applied and eligible to AFR. And then they factor in the cost. Uh, cities then allocate reimbursement costs to the adjacent property owners in the developed land. But another important thing to note is that the public improvements have to be tendered to and accepted by the city before an AFR or after an AFR is established. AFR is established after or before roads are in the city. And roads can only be entered into construction. Um, again, if the time comes in 20 years and then they develop, they don't have to pay anything. If within 20 years, they have to pay whatever it is that the city engineer has allocated to them plus interest.
Well, the current situation and the subject of this hearing is a dispute over an advanced finance reimbursement application. So in December 2023, Mr. Gates submitted an application to the city for advanced finance reimbursement to basically, you know, he has the development in the middle of the city, Ponderosa Pine, with a couple of neighbors that are adjacent to his property. And he has built a road and he has built some public infrastructure. And he did what any developer would do is establish saying, and it's applied for advanced finance reimbursement. Um, after review, a total of $581,252 in expenses for construction and engineering costs of the necessary improvements uh, were deemed eligible by city staff, city engineer. And then the first public hearing was held on March, where the opposing side's application made a testimony. And, uh, testimony has continued for a few months in this courtyard now. The criteria for accepting of the first an application is in city chapter, uh, in the development code three, zero, three, zero, three, zero. And that's just the application requirement. But I ran through it and basically in my staff report, it's only two pages long, found that all the necessary materials were submitted to the city, that everything was supposed to order and it all seemed to be. The application must be submitted no later than 180 days after the public improvement is installed. And it was seen to be substantially complete, which we considered being installed on December 23rd. And then like I said, the, or, uh, this is not completely, it's not all complete. And we are not accepting it. And we're not going to accept it until after they, their litigation is done. If there's litigation that doesn't involve us. So we have been, I have been entirely consistent that we would not be accepting this as long as there was pending litigation. We're not wanting to drag into more litigation as a party. So, um.
I've been very vocal about that. So in this, there's a couple of things that we still are left as well and hold on to that. Some of the infrastructure that was, I think, out right on our list, uh, responsible items.
Can I ask you a question? I, maybe I'm completely misunderstanding, but it, I feel like what I'm hearing from you is that you have differing opinions on whether or not.
The application was.
Right.
And in and of itself.
Right.
However, outside of the certain. So we, um, we reviewed this application. Paul Gens and Max and I have all, um, reviewed the map. It lists not the, the attorney for the, like your opponent's base points that did, I believe. Um, I believe were valid and we. To the property owners. So I think that basically this kind of this stress test, the map wasn't the easiest map to understand. And we had to get more detail than we didn't originally have as far as the invoices. So we can determine exactly what was all going. All of us have arrived at a point where we're comfortable with the application. Um, there is a little bit of ambiguity in the code. That's also been pointed out by, uh, the attorney for the opponent. Kind of intentional. Um, I actually drafted this code. So, um, and that's because, um, there can be multiple, uh, related, um, projects that could be on one application. So, and then construction is certainly staged over time. So for instance, the road improvements in front of my office in the city of Westland have been going on since 2018. And I watched the various stages. Got built and then they've gone. Yeah. So construction can be complicated. Um, and and the punch list is done and the litigation is over. At that point, council would accept a road. There's actually a, there's a very specific section for accepting roads because they don't want people to be able to quit claim a street to a jurisdiction and then have the jurisdiction responsible for it, particularly if it's off adult city standards. So we did, I did the research on this in King City related to a road that you did. And, um, yeah, that can be done via a flat or it can be done during a specific process that would require you as a council to accept the road during, uh, or set how to happen. That's the information for the numbers. So, so I just want to have a clear priority for you. But discrepancy or the, the difference that you're hearing is not necessarily the reimbursement district. It's the acceptance of the infrastructure itself.
Got it.
Right? So that's the difference that you're hearing. Like we don't want to accept the infrastructure itself until all the issues. sorted out. And we want the record to be clear that we haven't accepted it and we won't accept it. The, um, the punch list, tell it's complete, like be a punch list, but also tell it's complete. Say it to the party, or in their.
It's okay to approve the reimbursement.
The AFR has to be, the application is only open for the AFR prior to.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So John's here and his engineers report, he's kind of consolidated some of the key points to, like some of the math behind, logic behind what the conclusions that we came to.
So I don't know if you all got the opportunity to look at the, the course. It's over. I'm just excluding copies of the invoice. But really the careful report is two pages. And so when you, if you check the report, uh, when you view the application, it takes away. And trying to avoid the, the information that you need to understand. One of the, the thing is, I. I reinforce that area. I don't need to go.
Yeah. If you want, you can move up to here and the audio will pick you up better.
The next, uh, the plan that shows the boundaries. So does the benefit area? So the boundaries, uh, you can see Mr. Gates' property has its name, his name on it. He's the, the main applicant. And then, uh, the other two properties are the properties that would benefit from the improvements at some point if they ever develop. So. Yeah. So I, I think, um, we've had discussions, you know, why exactly those limits? We had some initial discussions and heard some comments, but ultimately those are the boundaries that we determined make more sense in terms of, uh, the, uh, benefit area. And when we talk about improvement, it's not everything. The, the ordinance is very specific. It's for water, sanitary sewer, storm, uh, the actual road construction and some, uh, engineering cost. Uh, the next plan is going to show the water line. We really tried to make it very simple to depict what is eligible. So it's pretty much the water main. It's an eight inch water line. Uh, there are some vases connected to it. There are, uh, there is a fire hydrant. That's pretty much it. So it does not include the services that exclusively serve, for example, uh, Mr. Gates' property. And we ran the calculations. We had our own estimate, but then there was also, uh, the, the information from the construction, uh, from the contractor, what, uh, the applicant actually paid. And, and the numbers were showing nine, $6,000 for water. Uh, the other, uh, public improvement that would be eligible is the sanitary sewer, uh, highlighted in green. You know, it follows the water line. So, um, and we also looked at the cost. It was, you know, justified by the invoices. It was $1,000. Uh, next will be the storm water. Again, we're only pointing out the, the main line and the stubout for future connection. If the property to the north, for example, were to develop for, um, yes. Uh, and so again, we ran the numbers, $139,000. This appears relatively expensive because the sanitary sewers are relatively, you know, deeper.
I think we've got it. Please continue.
Yes. Uh, the last piece, uh, or the last qualified, qualified improvement are the road construction. That has a lot of, there is the actual road construction and then you have to propose sidewalk. And there are a couple of ADA runs. And the cost for that came up to two thou, $200,000, you know, cost. And that includes street lighting and, and street trees that will be planted at some point. And the last item that is eligible is the cost of engineering. That includes design, uh, surveying, and construction observation. Uh, the total invoicing, um, the total invoice for all the engineering was originally, I think it was about $180,000. And then we requested proof what was actually paid for and the estimate came down to 140. However, the ordinance, uh, requires the. However, the ordinance, uh, requires the engineering code to not exceed 13, 13.5% of the construction cost. So our calculations brought this down to 68,898. And all every, all the costs considered, we end up with a $1,000 as, uh, Max pointed out earlier. Uh, on the screen, there is a pie kind of representation. What is the percentage that go to the, the streets and then the water, sanitary storm and engineering and some of, some of the plans. That's pretty much it for, you know, what we looked at. Again, we're sitting through a lot of information and kind of, uh, really a lot. And the next interesting, uh, maybe topic is how do you actually allocate those costs? Um, there, there were several options. And one option that we, that we considered when we were reviewing the application, the very first application that we received back when, um, you know, we were looking at, can we distribute the cost based on the frontage, the frontage length? Frontage, we define the more frontage you have, the more benefit you will have for that, uh, for that, from that new development. But the problem with that approach is that one property, um, I don't know, I don't know if you could go back three slides. So the, keep going. Two more. One more. There you go. So when you look at this new street Bradley Lane, uh, if you look at the frontage, the property to the north has really a short frontage length. But the truth is, uh, the new road is the only access to that development. So if you only consider the, the frontage length, then it doesn't seem fair. Or you could say, okay, let's consider the entire length. That's a possibility. Um, and then the property to the east, it is a little, a, a short, you know, frontage. But again, for whatever angle you look at this, uh, that didn't quite work, you know, we thought that would raise more issues than answers. And so, and that is the option that was not presented in the application. That was just us thinking, well, what else can we look at? But what was submitted in the application was a distribution based on the number of lots. We looked at that one as well. And the problem with that is, uh, one property being developed. It's clear how many lots are being developed now. However, we have no idea how many lots will be in the future, uh, you know, in other properties. Uh, applicant was estimating like 10 lots for the property to the north. But what if the, the property owner decides to not use individual lots, but then, but maybe have a couple of apartments? Then the, the lot number thing wouldn't quite work. So, uh, and we thought that the recommended way to, that would be better than the other options would be to look at the total, uh, it's like the growth developable area. And that's what we use. And based on the total developable area, the growth developable, developable area, I would like to insist on that. Uh, we came up with the, the percentage that you see there. Uh, so you have, uh, the applicant is responsible for 55% of the total cost. Um, the other property owner would be 35% and then the other one would be 10%. Uh, the total cost for the improvement is the same regardless of how you distribute those. But then, um, based on these percentages, that, those are the numbers we ended up with. Those are the numbers we thought are appropriate, uh, and we recommended those numbers. Um, we admit, you know, when you talk in fairness, there is, there are always questions. You know? Now, the last point I would like to make is the, um, the advanced, um, reimbursement rate. How do you reimburse? So the city will be collecting the funds if, if the, everything is adopted. But then for reimbursement rate based on the ordinance, uh, the ordinance required to use a simple interest rate formula, which is pretty much the principal times the rate and the time. The time is, uh, the number of years. If properties, uh, if adjacent properties develops, say in two years, then we, we use two years. Uh, the principal is the, the initial, initial cost shown on there, you know, as calculated. And then the rate is, is the prime rate of interest. That primary rate of interest changes like, um, a couple of years ago, uh, it was 5.5%. But ever since the, the, the rate raised, you know, it went up. Now we're looking at 8.5% uh, as of yesterday. So if the, if something were adopted tonight, that would be the way of reference. Um, I guess I don't want to be too lengthy. I've already, I've been already, so I will stop here and, uh, see how it goes.
Yep. All right, is the city staff done with their presentations? Does the applicant wish to speak on the behalf of their application? Introduce yourself and remind me to go five minutes.
My name's James Gates. I live at 13392 Bradley Lane. Um, just basically to be very quick, for the record, I just wanted to pass along a letter I gave to, uh, the engineering side of the team here. And I just want to read it to, to you and it'll be also for the record. And it said, uh, gentlemen, King City did a detailed and thorough job. Nice work. I agree, I agree with the Ponderosa Pine subdivision advanced finance report and believe it is fair. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak in favor of the application? Assuming that means any member of the audience. Any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone online? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward. You have five minutes. Please state your name and the, the attorney. I'm not certain of your address.
I gave you my, you my work address.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
Okay.
So good evening, Mayor Thompson, members of the council. Um, my name's Adele Ridenour. I am a partner at Markowitz Herbolda Law firm in Portland, Oregon. I represent David and Eileen Bruce, and we are here in opposition to the applicant's petition for an advanced finance re- um, reimbursement district. I've submitted in a, uh, written letter that I submitted to the council about a week and a half ago. Um, the, our client, after the revised application, the city staff report and the revised engineer report, I just, I think we've got our, our response condensed down to really three central points and we urge you to reject the application of the petitioner. The first and most central, uh, reason that we are urging you to deny the application is based on its untimeliness. And as you heard from, I think the city's, uh, attorney, the order, King City ordinance has two timing requirements with regard to an advanced finance reimbursement district petition. Number one, the petition must be submitted within 180 days of a public improvement being installed. And the second criteria is that the public improvement must be, uh, it must not have been tendered and accepted by the city before the time in which you adopt the advanced finance reimbursement resolution. And while I've heard from the city manager and, and city attorney that they have not accepted the i- improvements, we actually have four distinct improvements here. And as set forth in my letter, three of those improvements are not only completed, they have been accepted by the city. And the city's engineers exhibit two to my letter notes. I'll read it for you in just a second. On February 6th, 2024, the city's engineers sent a letter of acceptance to developers stating that the city engineer has determined that public improvements for Ponderosa Pine subdivision have been completed effective February 2nd, 2024. Mr. Bingingo then went on to note that this letter will serve as the letter of acceptance of the completed work. As you just heard from the presentation from Mr. Bingingo, there are four distinct public improvements at issue here. A public water line, a public sanitary sewer, a public storm sewer line and water quality facility, and a public roads improvements with regard to Bradley and Caesar Lane. Those four distinct public improvements of, of those, only one, is there a punch list item still remaining? And it has to do with my client, the road, the pub, the street. The, the street was placed, uh, over my client's existing storm line that has been crushed. That's the subject of the litigation, the concern that we have here. But the punch list item of fixing that issue, the, the fact that the street has now been placed over the top of a crushed storm line has nothing to do with those other three improvements that the city has already accepted. Based on the city's ordinance, um, because those, uh, three improvements have already been, already been tendered to and accepted by the city, that developer's application is supposed to be automatically withdrawn with regard to those improvements, which means the costs associated with those improvements cannot be part of your consideration tonight, even if you were to approve the advanced finance reimbursement district, uh, petition in some regard. We also submit that the street is actually being used currently. Um, uh, garbage is being picked up on it and Washington County, um, has already determined that day letter. Washington County has assigned a plat number to Ponderosa Pines and considers Southwest Bradley Lane and the developer's extension of Caesar, Caesar tears a public way. So for all intents and purposes, the street is not only being, is not only constructed, it's actually being used, which we would submit despite the fact that the city is obviously left out, that, left that there are punch list items with regard to the street improvements. We think you can find it tendered and accepted based on the fact it's currently being used. Um, we will, we anticipated that developer will argue so long as any portion of the overall petition and improvements plural remains pending, this application is timely, but this isn't true. And this is where it comes, uh, we look at how Oregon law interprets statutes. And you need to give effect to all provisions within your code. King City Ordinance 3.03.140 notes that more than one public improvement may be the subject of an advanced financing agreement or resolution. The ordinance may is permissive, meaning this council has the power to approve an AFR based on multiple improvements or just a single improvement. Furthermore, the ordinance contemplates that timelines can be and will be analyzed on an improvement by improvement basis. I mentioned that 180 days, uh, that is found in King City Ordinance 3.03030A and notes that an application for AFR must be submitted no later than 180 days after the public improvement singular is installed. Use of the singular is important. It suggests that an application based on an improve, any improvement, not just if you're considering it as a total infrastructure project that is past 180 days is untimely. So what this means is that a developer running up against the deadline to submit an application for advanced finance reimbursement, whether based on when it was installed and it's coming up on that 180 deadline or when the city might be in the process of now tender, uh, accepting the improvement, may submit their application for AFR based upon a single improvement, even if later improvements are still going to come for a part of their overall development. And in fact, sure.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Developers can even submit an application for an improvement before it's constructed based on estimates and then shoring that up with invoices to follow. That's also in your ordinance. So again, in contemplation, you can do this on an improvement by improvement basis. The second argument that we've laid out is that we believe the methodology is inequitable. Uh, the Lockman property, which is an adjacent property, the developer submitted an application initially in November noting that had 10,000 square feet plus of buildable area. And now in the most revised version, it's less, it's 7,920, I think. So we urge you to find, use, utilize his original square footage application. Furthermore, because our clients continue to have their construction defect, we believe it unreasonable and unfair for them to have to pay twice, meaning have to pay for essentially the contractors they didn't hire schedule to, uh, damage their storm line and then go and pay for their storm line to be repaired in the future. Lastly, and this is just more of a public policy urgent, if you adopt this advanced finance reimbursement, it potentially has a chilling effect on whether residential homeowners with buildable area will want to move forward with further development, given that they're going to be faced with increased development costs that exponentially increase because of the interest that's going to compound on those costs over time. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to provide mutual comments? Anyone online? Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Does the staff have anything to add?
Yeah, I have. I've put it. Um, so we still, this is the letter from Concord dated February 6th, 2024. It was a recommendation by, addressed to Michael. We specifically didn't accept it. And I specifically told them not to accept it. And we did not allow, we did not release the law and there's still so none of, none of the items happened. Um, but interpreting the, um, but interpreting this, I think it would be helpful for you to understand that I wrote this, um, advanced financing district for the city of Scappus. And then I plagiarized myself, which means that you got the, the benefit of the time that I spent there. Um, and then we discussed the consequences of my plea. The area that I wrote the advanced financing district was an industrial area that had been brought into Scappus. And the primary developers in it was a gentleman named Joe Weston. And, uh, who has a lot of buildings in Brooklyn with roses on them, no relation to Mike. Um, and a gentleman named Ed Preman, they controlled at once about 70% of the dirt. And then there were a couple of other owners that have left. We were doing multiple projects at once to allow for the development of that. But there were projects that could be folded into one AFR application and then project singular, like roadside, water sewer here. And then this public park, which they were constructing for us there, and all these things. I wrote it so they could fold those all into one advanced finance if they wanted. And then we could determine the cost on a, um, project by project basis if necessary, depending on how they scheduled the build out. I had never considered that someone would interpret water, sewer, street, sidewalk as being different, um, different applications. And it's all required under our code for one street. So, um, that's just not something that, that had occurred to me. I, I think I think, I get how someone could, I get how someone could interpret that. It does say the word may, and that was to provide flexibility for these larger types of projects. Ultimately, under Oregon law, a city council is, is, is responsible for interpreting your code, and you are given vast deference and that interpretation of the code. Someone would have to demonstrate that you were clearly wrong. And I know this because I was recently at Luba multiple times in the jurisdictions, King City, and the House of Court of Appeals, making these same arguments, ultimately which were upheld. You don't have to interpret your code the way that I suggested my mental state was when I, when I wrote it, or what I was intending allow with the word may. You can interpret in the way that you believe the, for the city of King City. Wanted to give you the background to explain why there was that ambiguity between singular and plural. And, and that was to give a city maximum flexibility, and also make it easier for a developer to bundle all these things into one AFR and actually go do the work, submit the stuff one at a time for all at once, or they don't want to. So that was what, I knew, I knew there was some ambiguity in there and it was purposeful. I just didn't, didn't see the ambiguity the same way that, that was getting it. So lesson learned by me, but you are able to interpret it however you want. And. So just that we, we specifically didn't accept, accept these for legal purposes, like I explained earlier, this was a recommendation from the ordinance, and that I explained the rest on point three, on page four of the letter. And if you guys have any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Question?
I have one question, I think it was my question, the original one. So on the, the benefit area boundaries outlined. It just, we just showed the three properties, and then I, because if I recall, the other property that is kind of north, I guess on the east side, I would call it, was, you know, between gates and that owner, but I believe he's absorbing that cost.
That's sort of the one that's on the southeast side. The one on the northeast is the Diker property, and they'll need to take access from the office of Shakespeare's. Not really beneficial.
That's perfect, thank you.
Is the interest rate set by ordinance?
By. Prime, prime interest rate. In Georgia, no?
Yes, it is.
I guess I would want to make one other point. The intent of these is not chilling, is, is kind of the opposite of chilling. The intent is to get people to coordinate and do the bill together. These, these were originally designed for cities so that a city could put in infrastructure, Apple City did a lot of that, and then could collect from the adjoining property owners' personal estate, would reimburse cities of shared, unless, unless federal funds for infrastructure became available, and these are utilized by developers, and the thought is that the period is long enough to incentivize their neighbors to develop now. And the hope is for coordinated development versus a bunch already benefiting from the efforts of another, not sharing the cost. So that's kind of why cities, why these, I mean, I want to, you know, the old one in King City actually, so it, it, because in King City was originally built, was all built by the Tuolton Development Company, and then spaces were built by contractors, tall lots.
Well, I visited their development, and I walked in a couple of times trying to get a handle on this. And when I looked at the map, eighteen, lots eight, nine, and ten, they would have to tear down the structure, is that correct?
One of those lots could very well be a sway off. We don't know at the time. Still, depending on. If part of that structure in a shop would also have to be.
Actually, it's a free discussion.
Well, and it's, the Bruce's did not want to tear down their shop, and they only built seven lots. Would they, the allocation formula be adjusted, or they are ten lots for?
Yes, so we don't, we don't know what the end product will be that's built there, and that's why we looked at a couple of different scenarios for what will be most fair and equitable. And it could be townhomes, it could be apartments, and there's some flexibility in zoning, which is why we did it based on this. At one point, we considered using the areas that houses, if someone might demo a house for more lots, I think that happened, but at the end of the day, we had decided on this one, which is basically the largest area that a developer would most easily have a loss.
Was it only calling for developable square footage when they build? So like, in that instance, like if they leave a structure, that's going to be not developable, so then that portion wouldn't be included into the square footage, or is it the entire property?
Well, we kind of doubted the entire property. We, we didn't, as, um, we weren't sure whether the house would be torn down, if, if the Bruce's were to develop, we don't know whether the house would be torn down.
Was it, it was based off of what, just what they get right now, or what?
Yeah. Most parts of the developable area.
What, Councilman else is asking though, is part of that blue area, the Bruce's developable whole property includes, I don't know if it's a shed or detached garage or something. So his question, I think, was if they change their mind and decide they want to keep that outbuilding, does it change how much they have to contribute?
No, it, it's, the contributions are set at this point. So if they were to demo everything and how long. So it's, and it could be, depending on between apartments, we're not sure what it will look like. And they could do nothing. I mean, in twenty years, their house could be there, and, and nothing will change. Year twenty, day one, a permit, and they would.
If they did build only seven lots, they, would it be adjusted?
Well, the one square footage, maybe. Most of these involve bare land, but this is the first of them that I've seen that have a substantial portion of the property with improvement. That makes it a little bit more challenging.
So just to clarify and reiterate what you just said, if the Bruce's decide someday to tear down their home and develop their home, that area, they will not be charged more?
They'd also have the responsibility to connect part two, or, or sides, probably a half street. If they were to develop the front end of that property, that's why that front end calculation. This group specifically provides access to the back.
Other questions to the councilor's house, to the city staff?
All right, can you pull back up this app? Really fine print for my. When I'm trying to see this, it looks like lots nine and ten are outside the blue area. Is that correct?
The ghost class, and I did, I believe, right? So we didn't even include those there. They're outside of the, whatever, did you include?
They're not included. The idea, um. They did both, it, it, originally, I think they were intending to join. So, and there was a pin menu there out, actually.
That's just a wrapping point on, you know, where those areas. I think the class of a project that has the same structure in a different direction by projects.
Are they pinned buildable lots inside that shaded blue area? So the Bruce's.
But this is a catch up. I, I was, I had a long time ago, I was planning, it's up in the air, it's up there, it's changing, it's not like nine, technically. Oh, yeah, maybe. Hard to say exactly how many you can put in. No. Like what Mr. Watts was saying, is that at the time, that's how they can build whatever they want. Yeah, I mean, now that we can get a bonus, a bonus house, a lot.
But does that affect the, however, it's allocated by the number of lots?
No, no, that's what you did, it takes some square feet, because the zoning and what you're able to do on a quote unquote, single family house, it changes substantially to Oregon. And it's just based on raw square foot.
I guess one, just follow up on that. The, in the purple section, the lower left, what does it say on that?
The forty feet.
It said like track B or something on my map. What's that mean?
That's E, so, I mean, it could have been.
It, it couldn't have been stormwater activities.
Oh, yeah.
They don't need, you know, they come, they're not, but the stormwater kind of, I think, it's terrible.
Oh, I see.
So the number of lots doesn't matter on the allocation?
No. Stormwater, beach, uh, you know.
And now, I guess one other question is, who does approve or accept the improvements? Is it the city engineer or the city attorney?
I accept it. When it comes to my test for acceptance, then I take it off of the recommendation. The city's engineer makes the recommendation, then he runs it through legal, and then he makes the final decision. So I don't have the ability to stop him if he wanted. He wanted to do it, he did it, but generally, it's. So I, I always take into full consideration out of our. If something that they don't like, then why not kind of?
Well, I appreciate that, uh, thanks for helping me understand that. And Mr. Watts, I understand your intentions on making the ordinance ambiguous, but it seems problematic that the ordinance should be clear, and maybe it should say that the city manager signs off if the Bruce's were thinking that city engineer had given them , you know, by, well, that this is, a lot of this conversation is.
Well, we could, in the future, we could, we can, we could amend this in order to take out the. Um, that would require someone that was doing large development, AFRs, but that certainly would be done.
Well, I don't want to write the ordinance, but maybe we'd have a large development small development.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there are varieties. But your concern, the, your structure current state not being fully approved, or is it the calculations for the costs associated with the?
Well, my, I'll say my concern is this is a lot for the councilor on his first night.
Here, here. Great questions, Randy, all good questions. Does anyone else have any more questions, the city staff? Randy, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would ask for a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
If you could just, finding, related to the argument that. Interpret the project, project. So I think if, if you found one argument, whether it's hers or mine, you found if you want to just hit on. For clarity, as I was pointing out, that there's different structure from waters, or water, uh, private permission, so, I just, um, pull them together, so that's one project. And with that, a portion of that, we have for another portion. If our station, if you agree with staff, lump them together, or should, you know, be separated. First, this is our first, if you will, that, that's the, that was the, that was the argument. I was trying to explain that, but I had said improvements, it, they were typically multiple related projects, but that were separate, something like art here, street there, street gets built before the park, but they're in the same AFR.
And I agree, it should be clumped into one, right? You put the water sewer, stormwater, then you put the road and sidewalks in at the end to cover it all up, right?
Right, you install those.
Right.
I kind of think of, like, when you're building a house, you have to.
Foundation first, right? And you have to build on top of it.
Right, and you have to get different approvals along the way, electrical, plumbing, you can't do it all at the same time, it has to be done one at a time, and then at the very end, get the final write off. So it makes sense to me, and like what Councilman else just said, it makes sense to me that you can't really approve it all until it's all done, that you can approve it step by step, because you have to.
Do you need a motion on that?
No, just as long as, as long as it's clearly stated on the record, so that if this were to go to Luba or Washington County Court, I can say that this is how council interprets it, and so I'm seeing nodding, and it's, it appears like this council is, based on what council? If anyone disagrees with.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you disagree, then you're welcome to speak up.
Can you say the question again, like what are we agreeing or?
So what?
I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, sure, sure.
The project, is the project needs to be separated. So do you need an advanced finance reimbursement district for water sewer, uh, stormwater and the road itself, or do you consider it one project?
Again, it's like when you're building a house, a brand new house, you get a home loan for the whole house, and you pay for little bits and pieces as it, as it goes, but whole loan is the loan, but I don't know. Makes sense to me. Anyone else want to weigh in on this discussion?
You're going to develop. Have to do all of those things or you cannot.
Right.
You know, those are all. The code. Provide water, sewer. It's a bundle.
Right.
So the either bundle is approved or it's not.
Yeah. Councilor Trolley, do you have anything you want to contribute?
No, I think I've been able to make all the arguments that I was. It's just a matter of the, what the, the city. Staff and, and the capital support we can provide to them to help. To be. To, they can work forward.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay, it sounds like the majority of us are in agreement that it's one project. All right, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Move. Second.
Close the public hearing. Um, it says next call for discussion. Now we discuss whether or not we want to close the public hearing. Would anyone like to discuss whether or not we should close the public hearing?
Motion, in fact, in the discussion, if anyone has any. Public hearing closed and in discussion.
Well, we have to do a roll call. So you want to take the roll call?
So. For motion.
Yeah, the motion answered that.
Randy, so move that back to this.
Uh, no, it was actually Denny.
Oh, was it Denny?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
I believe.
And then Councilman. Yes.
Script says call for discussion, I called for it, I'm calling for a roll call.
All right.
Roll call?
Councilor Trolley. Senator Tyson.
Yes.
Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Senator Galpin. Senator Walton.
It's staying.
Walton.
No, also it's staying.
Mayor.
Yes.
So. Motion to close the public hearing is being passed by.
I declare this public hearing closed on June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at seven thirty six P M. At this time, we will discuss the recommendation to the city council. This is when we talk about it, um.
Recommendation is just that we accept the A F R.
Correct. Does anybody want to start us off with, um?
Which version? On the tier where it shows. Seventy nine.
Yeah, we have noted one from the last time, the numbers have all been adjusted from the last time we reviewed this. So, yes.
Time for the full lineup.
So, um, does anyone have any comments, questions, or discussions about what we're, what's in front of us? We need to make a decision on?
A little uncomfortable with the whole process.
Yeah, I agree.
And. Part of it is, is that. I know that there is, um, potential litigation and that. I guess I would like to know if there is. If the party involved are going to come to an amicable. Settle. And I know which.
Right. For the civil case with the storm drain? Right, right, it'd be nice if that was resolved, but I'm guessing it's not resolved. Yeah, it does, it makes me uncomfortable as well to make a, an important quasi judicial decision when there's pending litigation and, I mean, we're not lawyers, we're not judges. Um, so it is a very difficult question to be put in. I agree.
I mean, and the responsibility is big and I.
Right.
And I guess I want to. Understand the, the memo cations, the burden of a yes vote versus a no vote.
Right, so my understanding is that if we vote yes, it will probably likely be appealed. Um, and then will no longer be in our hands. We vote no, it'll probably very likely be appealed, will no longer be in our hands. So I think.
So a judge will decide on the yes.
Correct, so I think regardless of, I mean.
What, what you're really doing tonight is if you want to move forward with this, then we would bring back the resolution at your next. But there's a, there's a specific resolution that we, and we can have to session and talk. Um. It's a risk of changing us, I have never had an A F R built before, and I think all, all my committees have an A F R program. Um. Uh, of course, people can appeal, and that's why at the beginning, I kind of, I didn't know this was a little bit of Washington. I'm not aware of any A F Rs getting. It gets kicked somewhere, but, um, it hasn't been. Um, there is substantial evidence in the record, um, what the record would show in this. We've thoughtfully gone through this, um, we have changed course because of comments that have been made by members. Um, that they, that has, their household has interpreted, um, the definitions, staff has provided evidence related to, um, whether we've accepted this or not. That's pretty. Very ambiguous.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make or discussion?
I don't want to beat the dead horse, but Mr. Watts, if you could explain the ambiguity of the ordinance one more time, for an idiot's understanding.
Well, no, I mean, I, I totally understand why there would be a little bit of. So when I drafted this A F R originally, it was for a very large. Set of projects, it would benefit a relatively small number of landowners. Understanding that there was. All of the landowners had development experience, but there was one in particular that would be quote unquote driving the bus. And they would be paying for the, um, infrastructure. These are very high net worth individuals, and then the neighboring landowner would develop. And so we wanted to simplify it, um, there was no opposition to the A F R. Base. So I, I made it so that they could have multiple projects in one A F R. And then as they completed them, reimbursement could happen over that, so. There was a main street that was kind of the, a connector, um, but they were also required to construct a park, they were also required to construct trails. Those were all within the same area and within the same A F R. So when I had, when I had said, when I said improvement. Um, what I had meant was that there was one project that was complete and we had all the information. But at the point that we formed the A F R, we knew what the projects were and we had testings. So then, as those projects were completed, they were kind of completed like dominoes, then they would turn it and stuff, the city engineer would review it all, we'd make sure that it complied with that, and then we would allocate. Um, so. The reason for the ambiguity was it's our thought at the time, that these are usually for big projects. Was that, um, they could be bundled into one A F R from here. We're looking at it area by area, they. Areaable. It were related, but distinct. And it had different construction. So that's why it has both improvements for all, improvement singular, so that if the road is done, but no other project's done, then we have all the financial information. We could put, we'd walk that down, the city could accept the road, and then when the park got built, then we could get all that information, lock down the prices, that loop could be accepted, the city could accept the park. And we could just do it orderly development under one A F R with same impacting problem.
Well, Mr. Gates, one way and the Bruce's interpreted the numbers, and the city council going to vote to decide how we interpret.
Did you already interpret it, but what the representative for the Bruce's said is she did to say like that the water pipes. The water pipes were installed and the sewer pipes were installed and the, um, then the road was saved. And if you look at the timing of those individual items, like a water pipe, it might not be within the time period where you would be allowed. And so what I had said and what the mayor had said was. There, there are individual components, but there is one project overall that the water and the sewer have to be built before the road can be built. And so it should be bundled as one improvement versus looking at each predicate component of this as an individual. So that's how they, that was the difference in the interpretation and how the council president, mayor, and ultimate, a couple of councilors interpreted that.
Okay, so we are going to vote to approve this and not approve it, is that correct?
If you want, if you want to instruct us to bring back the resolution, to, to, we'll bring a resolution for the next hearing. If you're voting, no, no hearing, sorry, next meeting. I think the assumption would be if you instruct us to prepare the resolution, that you would probably be planning on passing the resolution. And if you didn't instruct us to prepare the resolution, that would be because you weren't planning on voting for the resolution. But that's what I would think, but, um, you know, I guess you could authorize us to bring the resolution and then, you know, next meeting.
So many of us are concerned about this civil litigation that's going on. Is there? We have an opportunity to approve with the condition that the approval comes after the civil litigation is settled?
Oh, boy. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not going to get, we're not going to get dragged into that case. Somebody might file a new case, but, um, and I would call C I S. But, yeah, I, I, uh. I don't want to think you're actually optimistic here, I just don't want, but, um, I really, on the record, we have, um. I hope we're not litigating this, because I think that's all that's in one way. But, uh, Luba, Luba has said, and just part of the future said. You know, we will not put our judgment into the, we will not replace our judgment with the judgment of their council. There's substantial record, there's substantial evidence in the record, the standard is clearly wrong, like that clearly wrong standard is very high, that's a very high bar for an appellate. And so, um. I, I would hope that it doesn't, and I, I would hope that they can work out the. It's really important that the city doesn't find our interest, their interest.
Sure, that makes sense. Yeah.
If the whole content purpose of the reimbursement district is finance reimbursement. Essentially providing.
Yeah, that makes sense, I, I just struggle with the notion that property has been damaged and now they're being asked to pay money. But I'm just conflicted with that, because it doesn't make sense to me that if somebody's property has been damaged, now they have to pay, help pay for that property.
Whether the property was damaged is the subject of the litigation that happens.
Right.
That's not for us to decide.
Right.
Uh, is resolved and it will probably be, however the outcome of that is.
Okay.
Uh, ours is simply for use of the health improvement.
Sure.
Put advice in happen date. Like there is no, there are actually no damages because this will only be triggered if the development application comes in during that period. And like, hey, I don't know why there would be damages out of it, but like. We were just, this, this, this same argument was made concerning our call plan, it, it doesn't actually change any of the land use in it, like any impact. And like. But we've now had this very issue of something that has the theoretical impact. And they fooled the same way every.
I mean, I, I guess, I hear what you're saying, I, I wasn't talking about financial damages, it's more the damage to the storm drain itself, is that what, are we talking about the same thing?
Yes, so I think that's the subject of the current litigation.
Right.
Because like, there's a disagreement about all sorts of things related to that storm drain.
Okay. Anyone, any other councilors want to weigh in on anything regarding this? Um, hearing no discussion, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions or denial.
Mark, it's open about a condition?
I mean, we could put a condition on it, but I'm not sure, because my, my thought was to put a condition on the.
Cause I, my, my thought was to put a condition on the resulting civil litigation, but it sounds like we wouldn't get entangled in that because it's a separate i- issue, even though it is, it kind of pertains to the same land again. So, uh, I mean, I would recommend that we do a motion to approve.
Okay, your motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Well, it was a tie. Again, Randy?
Randy can go first.
Okay. Councilor Olson. And then, uh, roll call for Weston.
For Charlie. If I approve with the condition that was mentioned?
Uh, it was without condition.
Without the condition, okay, yes, without the condition.
That's your fact.
I'm struggling with this. Um, I'm going to abstain.
Let you give us a reason for your abstention, please. Uh, we're just asked to give you, uh, can you give us a reason for your abstention, please? If it's just that you can't make up your mind on that. Thank you.
Yes.
Abstain. Uh, I have limited knowledge on this issue for meeting.
Thank you.
For Watson.
Same, I have limited knowledge, day one here, so.
Okay, he passes for zero with three extensions. We'll prepare a resolution for the next meeting.
Yeah, is my, am I, do I need to read anymore on the script? Am I, we're done? Okay, uh, let's take a five minute break, please. We will resume at eight P M.
I'm sorry, I will.
Okay. Go back to our new business. March and April twenty twenty four financials. Uh, presenter is Mira.
Yeah, Mira's online.
Mira, are you still with us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, I can hear you. Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, okay, let's take a look at the March two thousand twenty four uh, financial summary. So the first one is for the general fund. So the March revenue, the total of the March revenue is two, four hundred eighty one thousand, four ninety seven. And the expenditure is two ninety nine thousand and five ninety nine. So the highlights for the revenue is the planning grant from Metro and the new development deposit, which is fifteen thousand three hundred. And also the new development review, we get like two hundred ten thousand, one hundred nineteen. Yeah, that's a lot of money, um, in March. And the next one is the street fund. Ends up pretty straightforward. Uh, we have the total tax twenty nine thousand, eight ninety seven. And is there any question on the financial summary? The, okay, does.
Any councilors have any questions on the March financial summary?
Oh, I, I have just one general question. It goes more to, there are better explanations on, on the document, but, uh, uh, city manager, four hundred forty three thousand in March and in the budget, it's five hundred seventeen thousand. That's not your salary on your night, so, uh, uh, you know, if it's, I don't know what it is. But if it was city manager and staff or.
Which one?
Transition, more than just me, additional staff in the office as well. So it's everything that goes with the administration of the organization essentially. And then my salary and portions of my benefits are in there, but there's also expenses like, uh, for instance, uh, how rich they are. For, uh, events.
Yeah, I understand, I knew you weren't getting it up on the media. Uh, but yeah, I guess my point was it, they could, since city manager's office, there are several items in the bucket and all those that for us, on accounting people, is it just had a little more clarification? And that's all I had. Pretty usual.
I hear about the council too, because like the city councilors will be like.
I'm getting paid.
Right, but as part of that, it's not a umbrella fund, right? So the umbrella fund for that department is actually umbrella fund for the city manager administration of the city is actually the fund for the administration of a planning, that's why. You know, and each fund has like, um, laundry list and it turns for everything.
So yeah, for transparency and just to clean things up, if there's a little more.
Thank you.
Okay. Do, are we going to the next one? The local option fund?
Hold on, hold on one second, Mira. Does anyone else have any other questions for Mira on the March financials? Anyone? Okay, go ahead, Mira.
Okay, so shall I finish the March financial for the local option fund? So, so we have local option fund and the park system development fund, the American, uh, ARPA fund and the T D T fund. So any question on those funds for March financials?
Any questions, anyone?
Well, the, the one question I have, and I talked to Mike about it earlier, and the one for the park improvement, it's showing twenty thousand dollars.
And nothing's been spent, like could we make improvements to the park?
So Mira, what I was asking is, in the park fund, the park system development fund, we have, uh, twenty thousand dollars for park improvement and yet it does not show any expenditures today. Do we actually have that twenty thousand still available or did we use it?
Yes. Give me one moment, let me check here. For the park, park.
Sorry, can you put the document on the screen for the people there?
Good idea, Randy.
Okay, yes, we have twenty thousand available. We haven't spent any money so far, uh, by the end of March, that March financials. Let me check the April one. Yeah, I don't think we spent any money. No, no, we don't, we haven't spent any money on the park improvement yet, no.
About the swing set money?
There's no party are going on for park development, right?
Government, we'll repair some of the floor. But without twenty thousand, we're almost to July, right? So, but we'd love to add that to our budget potentially and show that we have the money to do it. To give it there as a placeholder in case we had.
All right.
Come here.
Okay, so let's go to the next one, April. So the na- April financial summary. So the highlight number are for the supplemental budget. Remember, we had a supplemental budget in, um, April seventeen? Council meeting, yeah, the council approved supplemental budget. So it reflect on the financial summary in April, the highlighted number. So this one is March. So next one.
With April, please.
Yeah, for April, we are talking about April.
Yeah, you've worked on it.
Okay. Yeah, so for April, the highlights for April revenues, we have, um, P G E franchise fee, hundred thirty nine thousand. And then the plan review for the Habitat for Humanity, that's sixteen units. So that's twenty seven thousand and the ninety four thousand for the water franchise fee from City of Tiger. And the highlight one is the seven ninety, uh, seven hundred ninety thousand transfer in from ARPA fund because we closed ARPA fund in April. Um, transfer all the remaining balance to general fund. So you can see the ending balance, three one four million in general fund, which the number looks good.
So we want to clarify that the number of expenses city has expended over the course of the ARPA time that we recounted and expended already, so we're just replacing those.
Okay. All right, so the next one will be the street fund. The street fund, it's, yeah, highlighted number are the due to supplemental budget. The next one is the local option fund, which is, are the fund we transfer out to support a police department. Uh, every month we transfer, yeah, thirty two thousand seven hundred eight dollars to general fund each month. Uh, the next one is park system development fund. There's no expenditure, no project going on, just the revenue. We have our first S D C charge, uh, this year for the sixteen units from Habitat for some, uh, for humanity, hundred twenty eight thousand. And then the next one, you'll see the transportation S D C fund, which is the new fund we added in the supplemental budget in April. Uh, we have our first transportation S D C fund, hundred thousand, four hundred from the, that sixteen units from humanity for Habitat for Humanity. So this is a new fund, yeah. And the next one will be the ARPA fund. Yeah, the ARPA fund, you can see we closed this fund, it transferred all to the general fund. All right, and the last one, T D T fund. And it's the same, we get our, the first eighty, uh, T D T from the sixteen units from Habitat for Humanity, four hundred one thousand four hundred forty. Any question?
I just want to point out, all the things, the system development charges from Habitat came in. You'll see those in the park, you'll see them in the new fund, it is transportation S D C fund. So you'll see that was roughly about three hundred thousand. Um, there's also an additional three hundred thousand dollars in review fees that go to the department, uh, unless before, there's about two hundred thousand dollars from mining department that came in for review fees. So all those are added up and that's why our budget line from April went from five million revenue to six million revenue plus.
Anybody have any questions on that for Mira or Mike on the April financials? I don't see any hands raised or people speaking up. Okay, Mira?
Okay.
Oh, I guess not, uh, you're, I think you have to stick around.
Yes, yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. So, uh, we need to, we need a motion to approve the financials, correct?
Make a motion to approve the March and April twenty twenty four financials.
All those in favor? Raise your hand, please. All those opposed? Uh, oh, that's me. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven, fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, transfer budget. Mira.
Yes.
I'm gonna jump in, Mira, just to make a little faster here. So, uh, this is our transfer budget. This is the last minute adjustment for any kind of funds that were close for going over. Got some additional revenues that came in and exceeded what we thought were going to come in last minute. So you'll see that it adjusts about a hundred twenty thousand dollars additional revenue coming in. Also had some expenditures for vacation payouts to the attorney fees. Uh, training travel, dispatch services got a little bit higher. Uh, those are counted for and updated in the revised version that you should have received today. Um, one that was in your packet, really only show even special department expenses and legal bases payouts to show, uh, training, travel, contract services, uh, vacation payout for the police officers and. So those are all called out in the revised version that you have.
Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, so on the, on the legal fees, what is the bulk of the attorney fees on that?
Uh, well, we had some adjourned arrangements for contracts and development agreement and a number of other, uh, reductions, but hopefully it's coming to be the appeal, you know, four or five, four appeals that.
That means the Luba appeals and then the court appeals that.
There is a lot of big stuff coming up here, recall stuff with, uh,
Any other questions for Seth?
I'll see if someone here, but, uh, that is such a challenge to the Secretary of State regarding the recall. Do you know how much that was?
About twenty, I think it was around twenty four thousand.
You mentioned that since we won the appeal, we can go back and get some of those funds.
Yeah.
Back reflected?
It's not yet, uh, we're waiting on the court of appeals to settle and, uh, which are.
So that's, so once we annualize that number, it would, it would change that number then?
It should show us, um, this would be a revenue credit, that would be back.
Okay. Okay. When do we, when, when are we gonna, when's that gonna happen or what, what's the process for that? I'm just curious.
So my understanding is, if you're not here, of course, it's a lot, so, uh, forgive me if I, you gotta determine here, but my understanding is you've been coordinating with the, uh, court of appeals to figure out, um, what persons of services for themselves and the intervenors are recoverable and then, uh, calculating that final figure and then end these now.
Any questions? Any other questions? A question, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, declaring the city election to receive state revenues. This is an annual one that we go over every year, right? And is this gonna be Mira or Mike presenting?
Essentially, we're in the budget right now, right? So most of you were present at our budget committee meeting, and I can't, such as that going time. This first ordinance is essentially an ordinance of the city passes where we say, well, by certain rule of laws and evidence and in doing so, we're accepting state money and promises that we'll spend it according to state regulations. That's what resolution two thousand twenty-four dash. Also, the city, what our services. And the general layout for.
Is there any, are there any questions on that, any discussion on that resolution to receive state revenues?
Well, I, I support the resolution, I'm just curious that it's, we've already passed it. And it's just not signed yet. And it's passed by the council on the twenty-sixth of June.
It's just already filled out.
Today, yeah, pre-filled it because this is our last year.
Yeah.
And that's in handwriting, it's intentional?
Yes, it's handwritten writing.
And then immediately following the meeting, we will sign, sign the resolution. Because I think it was, there was a timeframe associated, timeline associated. But great question. Alright, any other questions or comments? Not, then I will entertain a motion to approve resolution, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight.
Will you approve?
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Moving right along to resolution, resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine, adopting the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Jumping through all the line items and going back through the, did any of the council have any questions regarding the budget or modifications amendment that you'd like to talk about or I see you're all familiar with.
I just want to clarify that service level continues at the same levels and taxes stay the same?
Taxes usually go up, we don't adjust them, our permanent tax rate is the same, that doesn't change. Service levels are protected, it's just, Washington says, uh, patients on property value adjustments, but they're only allowed to go up three, and then there's your tax formula for, um, uh, that ends up in, but it's a format. It's a very odd formula, and I, I, I sure struggles trying to figure it out.
Anyway, just one other question on, uh, when other police departments cover, when our police officers are busy to do something else, can we reimburse the other?
If you get a bill, what you call for service?
If, if, if there's a plan, uh, over down, you know, whether it's for training or whatever it is, I have to make an arrangement. Their office or Tiger. It's just between hours that, a couple hour job, when we don't have an officer on, you cannot.
Okay, thank you.
When we have like a cross-agency operative agreement on most of the stuff, so if there's, if we aren't here and a call comes in, pockets is spent or dispersed next available officer. So we're always covered in our area, and we have an agreement, all the other reasons. They're covered, they're not on, they're on, and a call comes in, our officer is.
Any other questions on resolution? To adopt the budget? Twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five? If not, I'll entertain a motion? Another tie, Ronnie? Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Then, um, I would like to discuss with the council real quick, out of respect for some of the people that are in the audience that may be not planning on being here this late, um, I would like to discuss moving item G to the next, the next item. And that's the item of, um, planning commission and budget committee appointment. How do you all feel about moving that to the next agenda item? Okay, I just need a motion to.
A motion to move, uh, item G on the agenda for the planning commission and budget committee appointments as our next item.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, so we're on to planning commission and budget committee appointments. Discuss and consider appointing applicants to the planning commission and budget committee. Uh, it says presenter, my question.
We have a number of applicants that have indicated their interest and want to, uh, according those applications to the council for selection. Melanie Sage Bear applied for a planning commission, that she would also be open to budget. Uh, we have Lori Petrie, who mentioned that she, you know, in the planning commission. We have an application for as well. Uh, we have Stephen Gerhart mentioned in the hearing that. Gary Mitchell said that he would also be interested in planning commission. And then, who mentioned that you have an interest in possibly planning mission or budget committee. Carl Swanson also mentioned that you had an interest in planning mission or budget. Jessica Raverman mentioned that she would be in planning mission or budget. And Gretchen Beener said that she would be wanting to do budget, while it's already.
Thank you. And there are two open positions in the planning commission?
There are two open planning commission positions currently, and there are six open budget committees.
So I'm gonna suggest that we start with the planning commission? There's two openings?
Have all the applicants, have they confirmed they're still interested in the position?
Going off of their verbal testimony, and then the ones where it was not confirmed in the verbal testimony, I called them and then, uh, called them to verbally confirm with each and every one of them. But these are their voice, uh, iterations, and they appear further.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just was thinking, um, we'd start with the planning commission, since there are two positions available?
Nominate?
Yeah, if somebody would like to nominate someone?
I'd like to nominate Stephen Gerhart and Gary Mitchell.
Okay. Uh, we'll just do one at a time, sort of a split, if that's okay? Thank you, so we'll start with, um, it's complicated, because it seems like we changed the way we do this every time, but, um, I'm wondering if we should just ask for all nominations and then people vote, or should we vote on the nominations as they come?
It's really the council, you can either go and say a nominee, uh, you could go with individual nominee. Nominee requires a second, and then a vote, we're down. Uh, it's probably kind of the cleanest way to do it, and it would be like Counselor Olson just made a motion to nominate Stephen Gerhart for planning commission. So put that, put that for a second, and then have a vote, we're down, win or lose, goes down. Uh, move on, somebody else makes a nomination, it's a second, we vote, move on. That's probably the most effective way, efficient way to do this.
Okay.
It just depends on how much discussion you want to have on it.
Yeah.
Or people just want to vote for their feeling on this particular item. Or you can list the nominations and then go through them. So Mr. Olson's already nominated, Mr. Gerhart, and then he also mentioned Mr. Mitchell. So if you were going to do a list of nominations, you'd have those two. Counselor Watson, have his nomination, Counselor Galpin, Counselor Tysoe, Counselor O'Toole. Give me there's some nominalities there that show up.
I think that sounds like a great way to do it, personally, since we have so many applicants for only two spots.
Okay, so what I will do is, I will write down the nominations of each counselor.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Wait, I have to, I have to stop really quick, is that okay with everyone else?
No.
Just, all it is, is we're just gonna go through, and if you.
Everyone needs two names.
If you want to name, yeah, two names, you can.
No, one of them was.
It got kind of late, yeah.
Well, I have nominated so far by Counselor Olson, Stephen Gerhart, and Gary Mitchell.
Okay.
Counselor Wallonson.
Yeah, I would like to nominate, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna say his name right, Lori Petrie, I correct? Yep, and I would like to also nominate Steve Gerhart.
Uh, Counselor Galpin.
Gretchen Buder and Stephen Gerhart.
Planning commission, yeah, it's just a misprint, she's already on the planning commission.
Mind me.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh, Counselor Manella.
Yeah, I'd like to put Lori Petrie and Gary Mitchell.
Ms. Lo Tysoe?
Lori Petrie and Gary Mitchell.
Ms. O'Toole?
Lori Petrie and Gary Mitchell.
Looks like they might have a majority already.
Counselor Galpin's. Galpin, do you place that or do you contest that?
Melanie Sage Bear is my neighbor two doors down, so I'm gonna have to turn name up, Robbie.
Smart man.
So which one was that again?
Melanie.
Melanie Sage Bear.
Melanie. And do you have another?
Yeah, uh, Stephen Gerhart.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Uh, Lori Petrie. And do I have to do a second? Can we just vote, we don't already have a majority? I want two Lori Petries, okay.
It looks like the nominations alone, Mr. Mitchell has out Mr. Gerhart by. So let you go.
Well, I think, I think what we should do is, once we have a.
Majority?
Yeah, maybe vote on the top, three or four.
Who would have to have to, we'd put a motion up to that?
The top two right now are Lori Petrie and Gary Mitchell.
Can I make a motion to appoint Lori Petrie and Gary Mitchell to the planning commission?
Second?
Oh, second.
Want to do a roll call or a hand raise of the sun?
Roll calls. Um, right now, we have a motion, second on the table.
Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss regarding the? Nope.
We have a recall in there somewhere.
What?
Recall, I mean, it's being recalled, is that not an issue?
No.
No, they're.
Oh, no, it's for planning commission. I mean, it could be an issue if. Everybody's entitled to their opinion. Ms. Lo Tysoe? Okay.
Uh, Counselor Olson. Counselor Wallonson.
Yes.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Ms. O'Toole.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe.
Yes.
Counselor Manella.
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed, it's fixed.
Great, so let's move on to the budget committee. Um, there are six open spots on the budget committee. We're not required to fill all of them if we decide not to. Um, I just wanted to put that out there.
Is Gretchen willing to serve on the vote committee?
Our standing general. Along with, uh, Melanie Sage Bear, mentioning that she was willing to as well.
She, in the, oh, okay, I didn't know that.
By the voice.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's have some discussion about this. So there's a couple of people that are throwing in their hats for both. I'm assuming that everyone would be okay with that, since the budget committee only meets once a year. Um, those people are Gretchen Beener and Lori Petrie, they're both uh, on the planning commis- commission, Lori Petrie just got, uh, so maybe we just start with those two?
I feel both of them are very qualified to serve in both positions prominently.
I agree.
So I would entertain a motion to.
You want to make, you want to move?
Nominate the two of them for.
Can you name them in your motion?
Huh?
Name them in your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, to, to nominate Gretchen Buner and Lori Petrie for the budget.
Okay. Uh, here a second?
Second.
All those in favor of appointing Lori Petrie and Gretchen Beener to the budget committee?
Do you need a, do you want to do it by voice, or?
Sorry.
Uh, Counselor O'Toole.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Counselor Olson. Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Uh, and I just want to put out that, uh, Mr. Gearhart has also mentioned that he had been asked to potentially serve on.
Okay. So that was, there's four more?
Yeah.
Does anyone like to nominate? Anyone?
I'll nominate Stephen Gearhart and Carl Swanson.
Um, is it okay if we take those one at a time?
Sure, Stephen Gearhart.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Counselor Galpin. Was it Gary? Oh, sorry. Sorry about that.
Counselor Ocholi.
Yes.
Oh, are we voting?
We're, yeah, we're voting on, uh, Stephen Gearhart.
Oh, okay.
Counselor, yes, uh, Counselor Tysoe.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Walton, yes. Counselor Olson, yes. Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
And as well, so there's.
Three plus.
Well, just a point of order. I, I'm not sure if we did that last one correct. I, I feel like when somebody's nominated in second and then we, there's an opportunity for discussion before we vote. It doesn't matter with Mr. Gearhart because we all said yes, but it might matter on other people. Want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
And Mr. Olson, Counselor Olson's, uh, motion for, for Mr. Swanson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question? Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and say, I, I do have some concerns about, um, Mr. Swanson. Um, I know, I realize that you don't have to live in King City to serve on the Budget Committee, but, um, it was confusing to me when he interviewed for the city council to whether or not he actually resided in King City or in Rivermead.
Yeah, I kind of got that saying.
So I just questioned the integrity possibility, possibly, um, of knowing where, where this person actually resides. So that's just my only concern about Mr. Swanson.
Carl does own two houses. One house his father lives in, and Carl does reside here in King City proper.
Okay. Yeah, I was confused on that and quite following it when he.
Like his wife and child and horses or whatever went in one place and then he was at the other, like, are you back with?
He's not a great interviewer, but, uh, he is very involved in the, the city and the community.
Okay. Do you want to, also have anything to add or? Let's go. If not, then we can take it to a vote.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Counselor Olson and Counselor Galpin. Counselor Ocholi.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe.
No.
Counselor Manella.
No.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
No.
Motion passed, it's board three.
Okay, uh, do we have any more nominations for Budget Committee?
Oh, my name is Jessica Braverman. I've heard you to have autobiographies. Uh, she's a, a attorney who lives in, uh, she's on the HOA board.
Does anyone like to second the nomination?
Second.
Discussion, anyone?
When you have, uh, because she raised the question about, uh, time, maybe times of the Budget Committee, did she ever get, uh, the answer? She, she said it's in the morning, like, the time they're meeting right now, like, I don't know if she was, um, retired to.
Yeah, I think she did bring up something about time, but it's once a year and she would have fairly good, unless she was probably at court date, that was, that was out. I would imagine she would be able to take a morning.
Yeah, you're right. I'd forgotten that. And maybe that was more about the planning commission when we were discussing it. I'm not sure.
Management from a lifetime, because then.
Yeah, no, I, I, I even remember that now. You're right. Um, personally, I, I think we should point her to the Budget Committee if anybody wants my opinion.
She was really passionate when she was here talking to us. I mean, she didn't really want to get involved somehow.
Sure.
And, uh, so I applaud anybody who's, uh, hungry.
Yeah. Any more discussion about Ms. Braverman? Not, um, should we go ahead and do a roll call?
Counselor Ocholi.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe. Counselor Allison.
Yes.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
Yes.
Five, now.
I thought that was six.
Well, there is six if we include what, five out of six. But it was less than, only one spot.
Oh.
Thought we did six, no.
I thought we did. Did we do Melanie? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to nominate, um, Melanie Sage Bear for the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Could be difficult.
Okay.
Didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
It could be difficult. Um, yeah, it's not my understanding that she was recently recalled from the KCCA HOA, I think. Um.
Or, or stepped back without, I don't know.
I'm, I'm not really sure. Okay.
Actually, recall, I think, step down. There was altercation, uh, in, in the office, if I understand.
Oh, okay.
I mean, without going into all the details of that because I don't know my business, but there.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding Melanie Sage Bear? Or none? I guess we should do a roll call vote?
Uh, Counselor Ocholi.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe.
No.
Counselor Manella.
No.
Counselor Galpin.
Yes.
Counselor Walton.
No.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Mayor Thompson.
No.
That was board three.
All right, are there any other nominations from our list of candidates? I don't hear any other nominations, so I'm, uh.
I'm sorry, what?
Six of seven.
Yeah, but how many have we nominated?
We just nominated five, and we already have, uh, uh.
These are, is that me?
There's one more seat. The only one left is.
Consider him, I'll nominate this, our candidate.
I hear a second? During then, um, I think we should close the planning commission and budget committee appointment section of the agenda. That was a failed motion.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 2024-10, TGM Grant Support. This was the item that the, um, community member over Zoom, um, wanted us to make some amendments to, I believe.
Peter, so here we go, you know, we had a whole discussion after, um, the conversation. Essentially, there are roles for management, there are roles for counselors, uh, counselors towards the policy, manager, manage day-to-day stuff. Managing our day-to-day stuff, our grant applications, our opening our grants. So it seems like what you basically be trying to do is take my job away from me, so, um, I take on it. But, uh, that was Peter's take as well, and, you know, council manager, council manager form of government is how things are done. As the manager typically manages the operations and what.
Yeah, because for any other grant, we don't look at it, you staff puts it together and, and the, the grant application and.
Every other grant application that I do is, uh, we staff manage that grant. That's our job, that's what we're here for, and it comes to policy decisions, we're getting them. There are any questions about the TGM grant, what is for, for additional planning work along, uh, West Side Trail corridor? Which I was going to give an update in, uh, uh, manager briefing in here and just tell you where we're at. Um, I can mute that up now and give you a brief presentation on where we're at in the West Side Trail so far and, uh, how that's progressing and what our timelines look like. That's what you'd like to discuss here or we can.
I think that would be pertinent just because that's what we're talking about.
The grant we have currently is a, uh, RFFA grant through Metro, uh, Trail, uh, uh, Parks and Trail Fund. And so we have probably $200,000 metro dollars of our match. Our match is, uh, pretty high, about forty percent, about a hundred some odd thousand dollars that we have to do. Uh, and it provides us additional, it provides us the initial steps to get those properties, uh, um, planned, getting the yellow book appraisals, getting them surveyed, getting, uh, general landscape of the grounds that's there, conjurors, uh, wetlands, any sort of natural amenities that we need to focus on. Opens up the preliminary conversations with the partners, the PGE, Bonneville, Kinder Morgan, along that corridor. It also provides some outreach to the public. So far, we've conducted four outreach events. Uh, we had an open house at Deer Creek Elementary, we had two park events, and then we had a, uh, event at the Field Day at Deer Creek, where we were able to get, uh, the young mind to the table and looking at it and kind of putting in what they like to see as well. Uh, each event had different outcomes, had a different, uh, demographics that showed up and had input. Our, um, whole team is synthesizing that data as well as the survey data that was online, online survey as well. Uh, so that's all coming along. I expect them to come up with some designs and permits to middles, as well as our yellow book stuff. We're still waiting on the final, uh, elements of the yellow book appraisal to come back. Um, but that should all start coming to, um, element of conclusion toward the fall. Um, I'm guessing like September, October, we'll start seeing some of those documents come in. We'll probably try to get approval by end of December, um, to have the initial design and plan. But that's only the first step, only to get to like twenty-five percent. And then what happens from here is additional planning work, that's what the TGM here. Um, this isn't the greatest fit for a TGM project, but it's a grant application that we're applying for. What we'll also do is we'll also apply for some RFFA funds, uh, back through Metro to further, uh, elaborate on our engineering and design. We have roughly a three, twenty-four million dollar project along the Bonneville and PG power line. And the engineering for this roughly, uh, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're about a third of the way there and we have two thirds of the way to go. So this is kind of gives you an idea of funding that we're chasing, project two. Hopefully, when we're at least twenty-five percent and we have permits submitted, go through that process, maybe a big grant comes along. Maybe there's a, uh, large state or federal grant or something. You know, trails or US Fish and Wildlife, or we're working on some green board grants, search one alliance, all things soil and water. We're working on a number of grants, Oregon Marine Board, uh, that we're going to just try to apply. And each one of those money pots will help us cover a certain portion of the budget. So that's what the TGM.
I think you said you, this will kind of help open up discussions with like PGE, Bonneville Power and Kinder Morgan, right? Hopefully, they could kick in, so.
Yeah, just as like the next step in the engineering and planning phase. So right now, we're at twenty-five percent. Ideally, want to get, uh, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent engineering and hopefully a hundred percent engineering so that we're shovel-ready, uh, because if you're going to get a federal grant, you have to shovel.
Kind of just to refresh memories too, this includes the, the purple water line, right, for recycled water, which then its water could tap into for all there.
Yeah.
Which could lower everyone's irrigation.
Yeah, well, we're working with Clean Water Services on getting it out there.
Right.
But hopefully, that's part of this plan and figuring out how we run that line down that corridor and provide, uh, that recyclable water to Edgewater, Mountain Mobile, some, uh, park and further out, Tiger, additional up the hill and, and other areas. So it's, it's really a great project and it's been fun interacting with the people at the park, at the open house, uh, with the kids at Deer Creek. It's just amazing. Uh, you get a lot of input on what they want to do, asphalt courts and playgrounds, uh, big parks. Uh, we even had requests for freshman trails, um, a lot of requests for water access, soccer fields, uh, community gardens, dog park was a big one. There, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of community input in a lot of different areas. And, yeah, about twenty-one acres total that we can try to figure out how to program those things in. What became interesting throughout the open house pieces and the public outreach was, everyone kind of wants to know how close amenity is to their house, right? So I think as our planners and our consultants really look into this, they're going to need to consider how we place those services or those amenities to really service that whole corridor, because it's about a mile long. You know, a walk, you figure about a quarter mile for most people is out there, stress stuff. Um, trying to figure out how to, which is, plenty of different amenities, of course, of our consultants are all such.
Do we ask questions?
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, great. Um, West Side Trail Master Plan shows the approximately twelve-foot wide trail under the DPA power lines with a raised boardwalk over the, the wetlands. Will DPA retain ownership of the property?
It looks like DPA, uh, will retain ownership of some large slot. It will give us ownership of our area, so like trails and. For our improvement purposes. They would still hold the corridor, and they would probably still home the underlying land. If we did like a permit through them, yeah, so that's what we've done, like the Falls and Hills, Parks and Rec, we retain.
Doesn't it, BPA still have to have access to their power lines?
Yeah.
So whatever planning we do, we have to allow for.
Yeah, so some of our initial discussions with BPA were actually pretty enlightening, because we went with them with the laundry list of everything that we were thinking of, and they didn't say no. So I was surprised, because I was like, really, you can put a basketball court in there? And their response was that, yeah, because those are 115 KB lines and not the larger 215, those are smaller electrical fields. So we were correct, they were okay with us putting restrooms under there, with us putting basketball courts, skate parks, all the fences, even park structures, but they have to be under a certain height and square footage. So there was a lot of flexibility, I was surprised. So I was pleasantly surprised after I mean.
Is it possible to build the trail without needing to acquire the Edgewater property?
I don't think so. I think that the city needs to acquire that property and start to move forward. There's too many things that have interest in the city, or park improvements, fuel improvements, adjacency, access, everything that goes along with that, to some, it's going to essentially require us to acquire that property.
When you say acquire, does that eminent domain?
I hope not. No, I think what our. We're going right now, I would have to go through and ask our property acquisition team, but essentially, hopefully make it more than fair, adequate, affordable for the purchase of that property, and work through the details.
Well, I hope so, because King City Representatives have said heatedly they would not use eminent domain, only will any sellers.
Well, that's our hope, because, you know, if it's a willing seller and we can move forward, well, then we can offer this to other granters too.
Okay, well, I'll just, I mean, you can't have eminent domain hoped for, but if they don't sell, then we're going to use eminent domain.
I would just say eminent domain really hasn't been used in Washington County in quite my lifetime, so I'm not aware of it, other than like federal highway projects, so. I don't think that's the way to go, that our property keep doing what they do, that they're going to be working with us to reach that for.
Can Maroni pull up an optimized budget and where the $779,000 did he spend?
I have the engineering, I don't have the available on here.
Okay.
Before the engineering of the project.
Well, and I think the sticking point or the concern for a lot of the community is two words, encouraged motorized transportation in the resolution. I think the community supports the West Side Trail completely. They don't want to lump in the West Side Trail and a road project together.
We have to shake beyond, because there's really no way around that. We're going to have to do the trail, we're going to have to do the roads, there's reasons for it, there's multiple reasons for it, but we need to design these things so that they function. Yes, we're going to do transportation facilities, but we're still not going to connect to 137th, because 137th isn't made or been improved yet to city standards, or to the standards eligible to handle that kind of load. So eventually, 137 would need to be improved to handle those loads, but until it's improved, it would basically be barricaded off with a temporary barricade at the end there. So when 137 does get improved, then those connections would be, but that's still, I don't know how long down the road. This is just for engineering, it doesn't put construction. Out there, doesn't break ground, our planning never. So with that, you have planning, engineering, permitting, all those elements to get this project going. Element will come along sooner or later, and they'll enhance into King City when they do, and when they try to develop along 137th. They'll be required to do street improvements at one time.
Any other questions from councilors?
Well, the barricades and signage, they should have been out years ago. Well.
I don't know why they didn't put them in Edgewater, because that would get to the city and the agency, I mean, to a certain level.
So with this resolution, you're going to get money, plan for possible future roads, and there's no asphalt being done.
Planning is the plan for the trail and the parking lots, restroom, the park amenities, the road crossing, big mills, crosswalks, the whole night, the bottom from Beat Bend all the way down to the river, the kayak launch, the dock, everything.
That sounds fantastic, there won't be any asphalt in this resolution.
I don't have the money. This is just for planning and engineering.
And the planning is for four roads?
There's, just for, so you would have Montague would stub over, Fisher would go to Roundabout and stub over, you'd have Catalyst that would stub over, and Avenue B. There would also be access points and parking.
There are, I don't know, a lot of unresolved issues with the Fisher Road extension. This does not lock us into any particular how the road's going to go.
Is the engineering, the planning.
For what? With almost 137th, and so then how the rest of the connection and where Fisher Road goes, that's still undecided.
Oh, that was decided in July of last year.
So, I think there's a lot in the community to feel otherwise. Hopefully, we are all working together to resolve this in an acceptable way that meets the goals and wishes of the community.
I don't think that the connection to 137th was under questionable.
Okay, well, I guess what I meant is, it's going to go almost to 137th, you're going to stub it, barricade it, and what happens after that is separate.
I mean, the only thing that would trigger it after that would be a development.
Yeah.
So if someone develops along 137th or River Road, then that would trigger.
They would have to.
That was, that's from day one in the, in the TSP.
Kingston or Myers will probably have to sell their property in order to get it to go down where it currently is. Which, oh, the end of Riverland, or Walkman on the other side, right? So for to go any further that way, you would need the Bankston property, or Meyer property, or both.
And that's still willing sellers. That includes that banks and conservation easement?
Banks and conservation easement, and I think we've had this discussion multiple times, and you know, this is where, you know, if everyone tries to trap us into this eminent. We would not intentionally eminent domain, but as I think Jessica or Jennifer Sarnock mentioned, is like the city has to threaten for the road through there. So obviously, that's something that we would have to address at that point in time. But that doesn't mean that's where it's going to go. There were still a lot of mobility options within the transportation system. To allow that road to move a lot of different ways, a lot of different directions, that's on mine, so. So a lot can happen, you don't know what it's going to look like at the end of the day. All we have is a plan, and sit on a shelf until people come to develop their property. They develop their property and pull it out and say.
Okay, and then what Mark was explaining to me, the trigger would be development, other houses?
I actually believe it would have to be, it flows down to two properties. I think just about anyone along Watson Lane on the north side or the east side of River Lane could potentially develop their site without staying in that road.
Right, they would, they would.
All of 137th.
They would do the improvements in front of that property.
Yeah.
Like if, if there was one piece of property on 137th that developed on the west side, and that strip, 137th would be developed, so you would have a two-lane road, and then, you know, it would be funky for a while until their developments come along.
It would be. And eventually, 137 would need to get improved altogether, right? But it goes in blocks, typically, it's what we see, it goes in blocks. Or somebody buys up a big swath of properties and then does one big chunk. But we've also seen areas go, and where it'd just be like maybe a one or two acre site that somebody owns, and they want to develop their site and put 20 houses on that. So they develop it up, they put their 15 or 20 houses on it, and they do the street side improvements right there, and flag back, and they have a little pulpit back there, and it comes back up. So there's a lot of different ways that this can happen. It could be somebody comes along and they get everybody in the neighborhood together, and they decide that they're just going to, or for the blank plate demo everything, and they're going to move everything around. Maybe that's what they do, but that'd be, don't get into a, first of all, speculation, and, and that's what you're asking me to do with this line of question, is speculate how this development is going to happen. I just don't know. And the only way that we can figure it out is to give our best guess effort, and that's what the plan is.
Well, this has been a long meeting, so I'm, I guess what I, for me to support this, this does not have anything to do with the banks and conservation easement. It doesn't lock in Fisher Road extension as alternative number two. It's just stubbing the roads, so development.
But it's only engineering, I think you said it was only about 25% of the cost of the engineering piece.
The engineering is about $800,000, about $800,000 total, so this is for additional planning and engineering. So this is not construction. Maybe I could tell you that in the vote tomorrow, but it's pretty clear that it's a bank construction, that's why you don't have a road. But that's just one of just a myriad, like 15% of grants that I'm throwing out right now. And this is just happening, and that is requiring a part of it to governing bodies to get this.
Okay, well, you can understand the majority, according to the vote, their concerns.
Being the diagram of the West Side Trail, that is the only area in question for this.
Okay, so any other questions or discussion on this resolution? Uh, yeah, I didn't, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2024-10 TGM Grant Support. Need a roll call vote on resolutions, or? All those in favor, raise your hand. So this is a particularly long meeting. I'd like to propose that we address items number H, and only because the golf tournament is coming up in a few weeks. And items I and J, we can push to next month, as well as council, council assignments, item S, I'd like to propose that we push those to next month. I think that we have the most important assignments already assigned, right, Mike, like we talked about today? Second, okay. All those in favor of adjusting our agenda, so that we can go home a little bit earlier? Raise your right hand. Um, so I'll just go ahead and talk about this TTSD sponsorship, unless you wanted to, your name was on it.
I'll let my mayor address that, because it's all, or I get it, it's a great one.
It wasn't, it was actually, the city of Tigerd has offered to share the cost of sponsoring a hole, I think it is, at the Tiger Twelton School District Foundation's annual golf tournament. It's happening on July 19th. So they're putting forward, I think, $750, Twelton is putting in $350, and they're asking us to match $350. So I think it's a great cause. I played in the golf tournament last year, I'm playing in it again this year, and that has nothing to do with this, it's just a total coincidence, but it is a, like Mark and I were discussing, it's a charity. All of the money that they raise, you know, is used for our schools, so I'm a big supporter of the foundation. But I would love to hear any thoughts, discussion, if anyone has anything to add.
I do, can I see my tablet?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I just want to disclose, under ORS 244, that my wife is an unpaid volunteer on the Board of Directors of TTSD Foundation as the Board President. Given that the TTSD Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization, and my wife is associated with it as a Board Member and President, TTSD would not qualify as a business under the statutory definition. Therefore, there is no potential or actual conflict of interest of my involvement in the discussion and the votes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our contribution of $350 to. All those in favor? For the kids, awesome. Okay, and then. Okay, and then, yeah. We are going to push council assignments, we're going to push the council officers, the firearm, police chief. So, we're going to push that to next week, or next month.
My report?
Yes, please.
Give us your report. Real quick, so, I know this went on in the newsletter and stuff, but we're going to rate to calls for service, uh, to a- Calls for service with the King City PD has been, uh, that kind of house. And police officer initiated that. Of those, calls for service, reporting them, report for it, majority of those will be. Statute, or as we're called, laws. Out of those 141 reports that, it's 48 arrests. Fifteen of those were DUI, that's now 17 as of last week. And, uh, this number's turning low now, but 217 citations, citations for mission. Just had our lead on, that's a lot of work to do. We get or decisions, uh, information we get, traffic stop, uh, our computer in the vehicle, criminal history checks, that sort of information. No discrepancies, they basically come in here and our policies, our training, and our safety and security, as far as that information goes. They found no, which is certainly on that, they received the- Policy was part of a flexible manual, and so that was good news. That's the first time I've been through that aspect, I've been through another. They do a technical where they come in and they look at the equipment, the cameras, our retention rates, on-site retention, off-site retention. So, it came up pretty soon, this is the first time in a while. For that, and then, last thing that I have is, uh, things Ronnie does here is he coordinates a red blood drive, and the blood donations and the products received from that have been used to technically necessary. 471, Ron, is that correct? I think it was 471, so.
From one blood drive?
From, it's from a couple that he's done.
Wow, yeah, that's amazing. Any questions for Chief Hoplar? Very much. Uh, city manager?
So, I don't know if anyone saw this scene, but there was a nice blurb about King City in the Travel Leader magazine.
Oh, yeah.
So, one of the top places in the United States for older adults, and also just a great place. So, I did like a little piece on LTV the other day. The thing got a loud session where we talked about kind of aging, like, and stuff that's going on, and some good stuff going on, so, really exciting. Well, I've killed the West Side Trail already, so I don't need to go down that path anymore. Development projects, we have a series of development projects going on right now. How to get for humanity is breaking ground, I'm going vertical. Two Mahomes at the corner of 131st and Fisher's, the Quorn Foundation's today, or Digging Out Foundation, we get ready to go there. We've got Fund Rose Spines down there that came in, their reimbursement district, they have a couple building permits in so far. And we also have 800 units subdivision out there at the corner of Roy Rogers, and East End is breaking ground and doing some grading out there today, and I put with last week. So, a lot going on, a lot happening, and we're still expecting more to come. I've been working hard on the land stuff, the TGM stuff, and a series of other grants that we're chasing right now for the docks, for the ramps, for everything trail related as well. It's last one, the Court of Appeals had upheld our city funding for the Eastern Texas Master Plan, and Luba upheld in favor of the city for the annexation. So, those two are settled, law down as well. We've been working, we sent out a newsletter recently. We partnered with Pam from Media this time, it's at Man Man Press, it saved us considerable money, and we got a better product at the end of the day, so, pretty happy about that, and came out looking really good. Fourth of July, we have a split situation going on this year. Two or three different parties trying to formulate this thing together. They're going to be doing a small parade over here at KFC. Then we have Inlow Real Estate, we have a King City sponsor, the park event, so hopefully some yard games, ice eateries, things of that nature. We're still working on movies in the park, we wanted to do movies this weekend. I don't know, we got the screen, but I don't know if we have the projector or the power, so we're trying. Hopefully, we're able to pull that together, and maybe a last minute announcement if we can't get it to work. We're also trying to coordinate with a few other folks about doing Shakespeare in the park for summer. So, we sat down with Heather Wayden from KCCF the last month, try to work that out as well, so. A lot of good things happening, a lot of fun events that we've all gone to and attended, and too many to speak, so I'm going to wrap it up.
Where can we find the newsletter?
Uh, the newsletter was mailed out to all residents, it should be in your mailbox.
Yesterday.
In your mailbox, it should be there, either at home or text.
Yeah, I got mine. I don't check my mail every day, I think it was, I checked it Friday, but-
It was sent out, I heard the week prior to June 17th. So, the idea was that it was supposed to get printed and put in the mail the week in prior to June 17th. And, uh, just to give you an idea, we're around now, we're almost coming off month. Uh, you know, a week away from 4th of July here, and two weeks, so, now it's just coming.
And going forward, it will be nailed out monthly?
Uh, it's actually a biannual, so we usually do it once in June and once in the wintertime. This time we got pushed back because of politics, and we didn't want to intervene or inter- he, 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 anything, so we held the newsletter off for a few months and then released it late. But, you know, it'd be my goal to eventually get to a point where we can get these newsletters going out at least quarterly. We still have the staff on hand to write a newsletter every month to take the production. So, a couple of weeks, not longer, trying to get everything together, piece it all together, write the articles, write the pieces, and then get it, so, by production.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any other questions for city staff? Max, did you have something you wanted to contribute? I mean, you don't have to, okay. No pressure, okay. Um, I think that's the end of our council reports. Is there anything pressing that anyone needs to-
Two brief things from my council.
Sure.
I guess this past weekend, I got a flood, several people contacted me because Twolton River Keepers put some temporary access into the river on Saturday, and everyone got super excited and thought that it was going to be a permanent thing. They were jumping up and down, but I guess it was temporary, and so they broke some heartsets. So, at least that access was very, is wanted, right? To get into the river and make it accessible. But they couldn't have just left it behind accidentally.
I went on that river flow, I was invited by the Twolton River Keepers, and they were super excited, and actually, a lot of people in the city showed up.
Yeah.
And so, I told Glenn Pete, the director over there, that next time in King City, like, we're going to encourage some new events here, and- I'll build it on our West Side, so we're trying to build that partnership. Are there any resources that I can reach out? I have lots of resources.
Yeah, we would have gone, but we were out of ten, so. Yeah, that's what I heard when I got back, several people knocking on my door. And then, just I attended the MAC board meeting on June 7th. The grant for King City that we have submitted for the PCM connectivity was approved for $17,230.
Nice. Go ahead. Great, that's great news.
Have a bunch of good gracious, can you just wait?
Can it wait, okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else have anything they wanted to say? All right, oh, yes, go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations to my fellow councillors coming on board today. Looking forward to working with everyone again. And also congratulations to all the appointees for the planning commission and the budget committee. Again, I always value participation, I welcome everyone. Send us feedback, send us what you feel, as we're all in this together, we all live in the same city. As Mike just mentioned, it would be a distraction, there's just not more people. And I'm planning for the future, and so I look forward to working with everyone here and supporting the committee here, so thank you for the opportunities.
Awesome, I was going to congratulate all of you as well, but I'm sure Charlie's already done that. So, with that, I will entertain a, well, do I have to say when we're meeting next? That part of what I need to, okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
All those in favor? Raise your hand? And then we're adjourned.